And we're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. It's May 28th, 2025, little after 6 o'clock. We're here in City Council Chambers at 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. We have one public hearing this evening, involves a substantial amendment to the CDBG type of annual action plans. Rule call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Mab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to start off with offering a prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we come today with heavy hearts, united in sorrow and gratitude, following the sudden loss of a dear friend, Greg Bisdorf. We're thankful for the time we and the Hamilton community had with Greg. We are thankful for every smile he offered, every hand he extended in kindness, and every moment of compassion that made our city a better place. Greg gave so graciously of his time to serve Hamilton's 17 communities and always did so with a smile. We find comfort in knowing that Greg's legacy lives on, in the lives he touched, the causes he championed, and the deep sense of care Greg showed to all. Help us carry forward the work Greg so passionately embraced. Prayers are extended to his family and loved ones. In sorrow, may we also celebrate a life well-lived. Amen. I'd like to ask for a moment of silent reflection for Greg as well. Thank you. I also wanted to just mention that Greg currently serves as a Chair of 17 Strong and various committees in the city, and previously named Volunteer of the Year. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Might be appropriate now just to say a couple comments. Greg, I want to speak up. Mr. Moller, please.
I just want to say, what a great human being. Somebody that came in from outs, who was not originally from Hamilton, coming from the outside. Hamilton was not always embraced when he first came into our town. He embraced the revitalization, and I think that all of 17 Strong and the people that were surrounded by him, he captured their spirit and led them down a path that continued to create what Hamilton has become today. Jimmy Unger from Corn Stand Jam said, "Be like Greg." I think that there's, he's going to be selling some shirts to raise some money for something, but let's say, "Be like Greg." God, if we all could be like Greg, man, we'd be a better, we'd be in a better place.
Mr. Mayor. Please, let's go right down the line.
Okay. I think it's such a testament to him that within hours after we found out that he had passed away, thank you to David for putting together an opportunity for us to be able to mourn together, there had to be 100 people there. I was just so, I shouldn't have been surprised, but I was just so shocked to see how many were there, and I think we all just needed to come together to kind of say, "How can this be happening? We just, this, this can't be." And that probably was one of the most healthy things we could have done with this kind of tragedy, so, thank you.
You put that photo back up there of him, please. Thank you. Now, this is devastating to his family, as well as his city family. Definitely a bright light, and that's an example of him being a bright light with the smile, holding a Lindemall pumpkin, with a "We Ready to Meet" t-shirt on. And he, he had the city spirit. He celebrated this town, and he volunteered for this town. There's something that I heard in church, "You'd rather see a sermon than hear a sermon." This gentleman had a tremendous, tremendous sermon. He, he will be missed. I mean, you can't even quantify it. He will be missed. Vice Mayor.
You know, I had the good fortune to grow up with the Bisdorf family in Lindemall, even though Greg wasn't born here. His family grew up right in Lindemall, and his father was always at our house. He hung around with my brother quite a bit, but Mark was a good part of our house, of the crew that came by on Pleasant Avenue. And when I first met Greg, and he said, "I'm Mark's son," I said, "Well, no wonder you look just like him." And, you know, you, you take him right away, because that whole family was great to be around, and, you know, he, he, they're just all, they were just all great people, and Greg definitely carried on the tradition of the Bisdorfs and his leadership. I, I think I posted on Facebook, if you look up the definition of community leader, you're going to see his picture, and he will be missed in Hamilton.
At the occasion, when Seven, when 17 Strong was just brand new, and it evolved out of sense of place, and Greg came to the city from Indianapolis where he'd lived and grew up, and he said, "Mr. Mab, I'd like to volunteer." And as 17 Strong evolved, I said, "What would you like to do?" He said, "I want to touch all 17 neighborhoods." And he did. He just personified the servant portion of what people give back to the city. So, he never knew a stranger. His smile just was 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and he would volunteer. Operation Pumpkin, he volunteered at, at all of the different events that we have here in Hamilton. He was just a, a regular guy that just loved our city from, from start to finish. So, we'll miss him. We're, we're glad you're all able to hear some of the story and, and wish that you might be able to join us. There will be a Celebration of Life on Sunday, June 17th, for Greg, and just keep that in your mind as we start to, or, June 8th, I'm sorry. But importantly, to be able to celebrate Greg Moore. Thank you.
Greg's going to be truly missed. What a wonderful and amazing man. He lived Hamilton. He didn't just say it, he, he lived it. Dedicated, he was always informed, he always wanted to help, and that is, I wish we could just get 1,000 more of him around here. He lifted up everybody's spirit, he lifted up our neighborhoods, and he, he lifted up Hamilton. And he embodied, excuse me, the "we" to me spirit. He, he lived by that. And he is going to be missed, and I will miss him deeply. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I know Liz Hayden and the Department of Neighborhoods have been in contact with his family. There will be a celebration on the 8th. He will have a funeral in Marion, Indiana, where his family is, so, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Okay, we now go to special presentations, and this is a, really a great annual event that we have. And Chrissy, Officer Collins, you want to come on up here with Chief Chenoweth and our educators for the evening? Why don't you tell us about the program, Chrissy, if you would? Officer Collins?
All right, well, good evening. I'm Officer Christie Collins from the Hamilton Police Department. So, the third grade seatbelt program is a program where I go in and talk to every third grader in the city of Hamilton, and I talk to them about seatbelt safety. I show a short demonstration and a short video on seatbelt safety. After the program, every third grader is encouraged to do a poster, which shows artwork, and they have to include a slogan on the poster. And out of over 800 third graders, I pick one winner from each of the 13 schools. Each of the 13 winners attend a pizza party in April, and then I have a, I pick a first-place winner, a second-place winner, and a special recognition winner. So, here tonight, I was supposed to have another winner come, but I, I don't know what happened to him. I reminded them, and unfortunately, they're not here. But here tonight, we have one of the winners from the third grade seatbelt program with his seatbelt slogan. So, do you want to show them, John, your poster? First, this is, this is John Michael Dilbert, and this is one of his, this is his poster, and do you want to read it to them? Why don't I hold the poster, you read it? Do you want to? Do you want me to read it? You hold it? Okay. And I, I love dinosaurs personally, so this one really was just unique to me. It says, "Buckle up, buttercup," and it says, "Don't become extinct like me." And then he's got his little dinosaur there. And then on the left-hand side here, it says, "Did you know 49 out of 50 states require seatbelts? Come on, 50." And then 50% of drivers killed weren't wearing seatbelts. Let's buckle up 100% of the time. And I like that he put all his stats on this side. In 2024, 9, 91.2% of adults are now using seatbelts, 8.8% left. In 2017, 14,955 lives were saved, and then he put awesome. So, he put, he did his homework on the left-hand side and put all the stats over here. And then snap it, sit back, drive safe, live free. Men don't use seatbelts as much as women. "Let's do better, men," he said. "Let's do better." I like that part. And then he says, "Truck drivers wear less seatbelts than any other drivers. Car, truck, or SUVs always buckle up like me." So, I love it. You did an awesome job. Yep, very proud of you.
Chief Chenoweth, you want to say a few things about this young man who's educating all of us?
Well, this program is a tremendous program for us, and I want to congratulate John Michael on his well-deserved award here. So, I also want to congratulate Officer Collins for this program, because this is such a huge connect point for us. It's a connect point for our neighborhoods, for our youth, and it really makes a difference. When you look at the stats and when you look at the numbers, teens are the least user of seatbelts that we have, so if we can make a difference in just one life, we're winning. So, I commend Officer Collins for her effort on this program and the connection with our future drivers that are coming up. So, again, congratulations to you, sir.
Well, we're not done yet, John. I'm going to give you something. I'm not done yet. Not done educating us yet, but I, all of us wants to thank Officer Collins and Chief, and the fact that this program just goes on and on and on. It builds a great bridge between young people and Officer Collins and other police officers who were there at Culligan Lodge. And, I mean, he, this man did his homework. So, we've got a little certificate to give to you as well. "City of Hamilton, this is certified that John Michael Dilbert of Linden Elementary School is hereby awarded this Certificate of Recognition, Third Grade Seatbelt Slogan Contest, First Place Winner. Signed this 28th day of May, 2025, some of myself as mayor, and acknowledged by all members of council." So, congratulations, that is yours. You're very welcome. And proud parents, you want to say anything about this young man? Uh-oh. All right, hey, that's a big smile you're missing, because he's smiling at his mom. How about a round of applause for this young man? Okay, okay, excuse me. Now go to audience of citizens. Individuals wish to make comment and may speak during this part of the agenda. We reserve the right to speak when their particular item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to speak are required to sign this blue public speaking book, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Alfred Barron, you sign the book. You come up here, give us your name and your address.
City Mayor, Matt Fair, city council members, city manager, secretary. My name is Alfred Barron on 123 Chestnut Street, Hamilton, Ohio. Of course, you've seen me before, I know this is repetitive, but anyhow, I'm here to bring up two subjects, and normally, when I bring up something, I have a solution for it too. So, it's a recommendation. On this tree trimming, I've been having a problem with that, with the trees are getting out of control. I look at the, the trees in Fairfield, and I see they're nice trept and cropped, and I look, come back to Hamilton, I look at ours, and it seem like they're destroying a muck. And my suggestion is that in the fall, after leaves fall, trim the trees, and in the spring before the leaves fall, get on the tree, trim the trees again. Because we're having a little problem with that, you know, to safety reasons, as far as getting in power lines, which, which City Councilman Laura, I spoke to him, and the mayor, you're already aware of my situation.
I drove past it today.
Yeah. Second is the, the pothole. We have a pothole problem in Hamilton, it's doing damage to people's personal vehicles. Now, I know you have a form there, and I don't know you don't want filling it out, putting claims into the city to pay for damages because of missed, missed potholes or unattended potholes that doing damages to tires and undercarriages and frames because of these heavier vehicles that should be on these roads, and I think, what is it, four feet asphalt on side streets and, what, six feet asphalt on major roads?
Not sure, but we're going to have you finish your comments first, then.
Okay, all right. Anyhow, with that, now, I'd like to see, you know, can step that up in order to address those matters. We've got a couple streets that are really bad. I mentioned one, Ludlow Street, it's picking up a lot of traffic, and I've just informed it's really bad, as far as that goes. Chestnut Street, my street, where we have a pothole where the fire trucks are now going around the hole. So, if you could, uh, address that and, and put some, you know, urgency on it, I'd appreciate it.
Let's look at the pothole. That pothole's out in front of 130 Chestnut. I bet you Councilmember Lauer saw it already, too?
Correct.
So, and it is, it does need, it does need to be worked on, there's no doubt about that. The trees, I mean, I did notice the trees. I couldn't tell if they were, some appear to be in the electric line, a couple look like they might be on the cable line.
There are power lines and cable lines, multiple lines going through there, from the new poles they put up when they encroached on the property, they rentals, some of it's probably cable, I don't know. But it's something you really don't want to tinker with, the average person doesn't want to tinker with, and you hit a high voltage and they get, uh...
I think you did try to reach out to Dave Peenman, is that correct?
I called them twice today, called yesterday at the BS of Councilman Laura, I gave them a ring out. I hadn't received reply back or a message or anything, so...
Okay. Well, Councilmember Lauer, can you update us on anything that you might know from today or yesterday?
So, there's been no updates as of today. I will get with Mr. Arthur after this meeting, and we, the, the pothole at 130 Chestnut is significant, and it's a route that's traveled by our fire department, so I do see, I have faith that he will get it done.
So, we're working on things for addressing, addressing the issues, and you bring them to us, we, we do our best, we do well.
I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Alfred. Okay, that takes care of audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, all caucus reports, the May 2025 finance report, and the May 2025 investment report. We're going to go on the committee of the whole, which will allow council to ask questions, provide direction, or comment on these reports of what's going on. Accept the motion, it's regular meeting, be recessed, the committee of the whole take place. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:22. We now go to the caucus agenda, Mr. Toddman, city clerk, you'll lead us through that, please.
Absolutely. Our first two items will be presented by our city clerk, Daniel Tiedemann. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I've got two items on the caucus agenda for tonight. First, the exciting topic of alley vacations. This, I will, before we get started, I want to mention, this is an amendment to Codified Ordinance 167.08. This is specifically about how we record alley vacations after it's been adopted by city council. So, when we talk about alley vacations, we're talking about vacating public access or city ownership to certain streets or alleys within the city. And our current, our current code reads that the city clerk's office shall notify the Butler County Auditor within two weeks after the ordinance has been adopted, but specifically by mailing a certified copy. So, the clerk's office conferred with the law department and has, we've got a new recommendation for how this, how this ordinance should be amended, and this is to read that an ordinance or a certified copy shall be recorded within the record of the Butler County Recorder instead. And this item was reviewed by the Ordnance Review Commission on, on their meeting that was held on May 14th, and there was a question brought up at the meeting about current practices regarding certified copies or original ordinances. The recommendation from the law department was to keep the current language, because it is compliant with the Ohio Revised Code. Do we have any questions on this item?
Questions? Okay.
Okay, moving on to item number two. This is regarding a purchase and sale agreement for a parcel located near bypass four. You may be wondering, what are we doing with this swamp? But it is potentially a sale of a 53-acre parcel out, out near Bicentennial Court where Salvagini of America is located. So, the city administration was interested in exploring whether or not we would want to sell this parcel, and it was appraised by Beck Consulting, which recommended that the best use would be some sort of passive recreation. The reasoning being that the parcel is located in a 100-year flood zone, and the soils are not suitable for development, making it cost-prohibited. The appraised value is about $289,000. Now, the Metro Parks of Butler County is interested in acquiring this parcel with funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission Green Space Conservation Program, which would pay for about 75% of the appraised value, or about $216,000, and which the city will accept as payment in full. The parcel in question is on the monitor, it's outlined in red. Staff has, staff is interested in retaining about nine acres in the southern portion of the parcel that's outlined in blue for potential future development. Any existing easements for utilities have been recorded, and the funds would go straight to the general fund, which could be used at either council or the city manager's pleasure. And lastly, if we decide to proceed with this, we request that this be a emergency ordinance, because the Metro Parks is trying to meet a deadline for these funds, which would be sometime in August. Do we have any questions about this item?
Daniel, will there be some walking areas in, in that area over there?
I would imagine it would likely be turned into some sort of a park. At least of right, as of right now, we're just discussing the sale of the property, but it's nearly identical to the Gilmore Ponds Metro Park, which is very close by.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I believe there's a bike trail that runs closer. I've ridden my bike down there, and I can't remember if I got walked over to it, but I think there already is a little bike trail, so, yeah. And there are a lot of turtles.
Any other questions?
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you. Next up for agenda item number three will be a presentation by our Director of Public Works, Mr. Dan Arthur.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. This is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the local 20th Union. It's, uh, range increases for the public utility workers and the utility crew leaders, and also an increase for training stipend. Kind of the purpose of this is a market adjustment for those positions. The, the mobile, mobile maintenance crew that, that travels there, they go down to, you know, the Meldol and Greenup and all over the place, they worked several weeks in a row, and we were having trouble, we lost one of the, one of the people from that was, that position as well already, so we're trying to make a market adjustment to kind of retain some, some of those, those folks in that, that role. Then the other one is, is a crew leader. It's adjusting a crew leader to be the same crew leader if you're at water production or if you're at water distribution. The third part of that is a stipend, they currently get a training stipend of 50 cents. We want to increase that to a dollar an hour when they do trainings, because we just went through the negotiations on Local 475, and that was a dollar an hour training stipend there. We want to make that kind of equal on both sides of the house. We have people from gas and water side and from streets, fleets, and sewers that do internal training for us on CDLs and save us thousands of dollars a year, so we're trying to kind of say a thank you with that stipend.
Any questions? Questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next up for agenda item number four will be a presentation by our Finance Director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. So, this caucus item is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the BCFA, and it's the nominally employee, Abby Havercoast, over there. As you all probably already know, we are currently performing this same service with the executive director over at the BCFA. Ms. Havercoast will be a salaried employee there, so it's a very automated process. When I say that, after, you know, all the payroll forms are filled out, she's just loaded into our payroll system, and, and it's going to produce the same check every two weeks, along with the file to direct deposit her funds. Of course, we're going to be reimbursed 100% by the BCFA. Nominal employee, we have no decision-making or any, any operational controls over her, and at this time, we are not requesting any increase of the $1,000 fee that we currently charge them. Is there any questions on this one?
Thank you, sir.
Next up for agenda item number five will be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Mayor, city council, residents of Hamilton, the matter we're bringing forth before you tonight is a recommendation relative to authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 216 South 3rd Street, City of Hamilton seller, I.L.S.O.L.L.C., yes, purchaser. And you could see where that's at, do you see where the logo for the Community for Solutions is? This is right across the street from that, just right behind this building here. That gives you, the bigger picture gives you an idea of what kind of lot it is. It, um, really is a remnant piece from a building that was taken down some time ago. I.L.S.O.L.L.C., which is Kruger and Hodges Associates, is a law firm that is expanding at 220 South 3rd Street. City staff is proposing that we sell the law firm approximately 0.10 acres of land adjacent to the new office for $1, for the purposes of constructing a parking lot to serve the clients. City staff is proposing to enter into a sale and development agreement with the law firm that requires the firm to invest at a minimum $1 million on the construction on 216... that requires the firm to invest at a minimum $1 million on the construction on 216 and the renovation of 220 South Third Street. And the agreement also requires the firm to create additional jobs, as in a lot of our development agreements, you'll see that we have clawbacks and contingencies and that sort of thing. This has been a pretty good project for us. Again, it's a remnant piece of property that's overripe, that's a patch of grass, actually. But what I'd say about the firm is that, you know, they started in 2018 with three people, they're up to 15 people today, and they anticipate to grow to 25 employees by 2031.
Questions?
And lastly, for Item Number Six, will be a presentation by our Director of Planning, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So I have before you tonight a preliminary and final plan development proposal for 2350 Pleasant Avenue, which is the Schuler-Bennyhoffen-Woolen Mill project that all of you I know are very familiar with. It's been talked about for a very long time, so this project finally was to the point where it came before the Planning Commission. This property, for those unfamiliar, is located in Lindenwald. The entire sort of campus that's being proposed is outlined in yellow, so it's currently a number of parcels which will have to be combined before this project's moved forward. But it is bordered by Pleasant Avenue, Bennyhoffen, Sims, and sort of Williams and Bell there to the north. It's the Schuler-Bennyhoffen Mill site, and then right across Williams Avenue is the former Linden Lanes property, which was demolished, and then a former gas station site. You'll see that the proposal does include vacating a portion of Williams Avenue. So the site is, or I'm sorry, so this, again, what's before you is a combined preliminary and final plan development for the mixed-use redevelopment of Schuler-Bennyhoffen Mill. It also included a specific use request pertaining to the 125 apartments in the BPD, Business Plan Development zoning district, and one variance request. Planning Commission took action and recommended approval. So here is a site plan provided by the applicant. It is 5.25 acres, as I may have mentioned, 125 apartments, 7,000 square feet of first-floor commercial space is being proposed, although those future uses of those commercial spaces are to be determined at this point. There's 247 parking spaces, which are located both inside of the building on the first floor, and then several exterior surface lots, which you can see here on this map. That greatly exceeds what's required by our code for parking, so they're exceeding that requirement. Let's see, amenities for the project include a new park space along the northwest frontage of Pleasant Avenue, an interior courtyard, bike parking, first-floor package room for the tenants, and laundry on all three floors. The variance request is related to the refuse enclosure, which is identified with the red circle on this map. So the refuse enclosure that's being proposed is tucked inside this existing alcove of the building, and it would include a solid wooden fence so that it is screened and not visible. It's obviously far enough away that it's not seen from the right-of-way as well. And the applicant also noted that primarily all of the processing of the trash inside the building will be occurring inside in interior rooms, and then will be brought outside to this enclosure, basically on garbage day. This is just an illustration, so this is looking sort of southeast. It shows you the proposed park space along Pleasant Avenue and the largest of the surface lots. You can note that there's also a wooden fence that's being proposed on the north and east sides there, or, yeah, north and east sides there to screen where it immediately butts residential. And landscaping in addition to the fence to help with the screening for the houses that are immediately located across the street. And then just a couple of floor plans. This is the first floor. It's a little hard to see, but the commercial, two commercial spaces there are on the north side. You can see that there's parking inside in a couple of different areas, and then apartments. Second floor is all apartments, and then there's actually a very small little third-floor space, which I'm not showing, where there are a few additional apartments in one part of the building. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion, the committee hall will be closed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The committee hall is closed at 6:37. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Adopted at 6:38. Now I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, excuse me, Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on their recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried also at 6:38. You now go to the public hearing, and I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting will be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, excuse me, we go into the public hearing at 6:38. If you'll please read that into the record.
Mayor, we had a motion and a second, but we still need a voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, my fault. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carried, 6:38. Mr. Toddeman.
Thank you. A public hearing regarding the City of Hamilton substantial amendment to multiple annual action plans delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant and community development block grant coronavirus virus relief and other, and authorizing submittal of said plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, you know, when the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving this substantial amendment to multiple annual action plans. Involve CDBG and CDBG CV funds.
We do have staff who are present for a presentation, if you'd like, Mayor.
Yeah, I believe there were going to be a short presentation, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So I'm presenting the notice. It's multiple fiscal years for community development block grant and community development block grant coronavirus relief funds for the purpose of housing activity delivery costs, public facility activity delivery costs, and also public facilities improvements specifically at Boys and Girls Club, public services that include transportation, and also public facility improvements at Living Waters. Here's a consolidated list because it includes multiple fiscal years and unexpendant funds from those multiple fiscal years. Any questions?
Thank you for the explanation.
No problem.
Anyone else in the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving the substantial amendments to manual, to multiple annual action plans? Anyone on council wished to be heard, make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:41. I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Regular meeting reconvened at 6:41. We now go to that part of the agenda, council actions pertaining to legislative items. And I'll accept the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion, I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:42. We now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number Eight, two readings of that substantial amendment, the new action plans already presented to us.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton substantial amendment annual action plan update for multiple fiscal years delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The City of Hamilton applicant to amend transfer budget and appropriate fiscal year 2022 through 2024 CDPG budgets up to $41,865.01 for housing contractual, up to $98,581.05 for public facility contractual, and up to $30,000 for public services, up to $20,000 for public facility improvements, and fiscal year 2019 through 2020 CDPG CV budget up to $78,085.01, sorry, excuse me, $78,085.05, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's substantial amendment annual action plan update for multiple fiscal years delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The City of Hamilton applicant to amend transfer budget and appropriate fiscal year 2022 through 2024 CDPG budgets up to $41,865.01 for housing contractual, up to $98,581.05 for public facility contractual, and up to $30,000 for public services, up to $20,000 for public facility improvements, and fiscal year 2019 through 2020 CDPG CV budget up to $78,875.05, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I approve that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Nine, first reading of an ordinance involving modification of a sale and development agreement, 1224 Schuler Avenue.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the first modification of a sale and development agreement between the City of Hamilton and Primo Property Services LLC, 1224 Schuler Avenue, first reading.
Thank you. Go to Agenda Item Number Ten, resolution involving honorary naming of Del Gray Way.
A resolution declaring a portion of Vandevere Avenue from North Fair Avenue to Lockwood Avenue be given the honorary name of Del Gray Way in tribute to Del Gray.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this? He'll be in town, I believe, this Saturday night, playing for Little Texas, so you can see him, congratulate him then. Any other comments at all? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, a resolution involving honorary naming Tony and Ray Moore Street.
A resolution declaring a portion of Vine Street from Pine Street to North Third Street be given the honorary name of Tony and Ray Moore Street in honor of Tony and Ray Moore.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this resolution? You know Tony and Ray Moore, you'll know that they are the North End leaders in so many ways. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, so a resolution involving supporting a grant and authorizing the city manager to execute intergovernmental agreements involving the Ray Avenue and Gordon Avenue projects.
A resolution supporting the filing of a grant application by the Butler County Transportation Improvement District to the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments for Surface Transportation Block Grant and Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Improvement Program, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Butler County Transportation Improvement District, and comply with the conditions of the grant and the funding relative to the Ray Avenue and Gordon Avenue at North B, at North B Street intersection improvement project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lauer, second by Councilmember Fear. Any comments on this? And we all want to thank those who put together these grant applications, because there's several of them tonight, and it takes a lot of work, and we've done very well with these grant applications. Nothing else, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen, a resolution involving grant application to OKI for Trail Connection Project.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments for the Transportation Alternatives Funding Program relative to the Rivers Edge to Black Street Trail Connection Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
By Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, resolution about a grant application congressional discretionary spending grant program, North A1 Crossing.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the congressional discretionary spending grant program, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds relative to funding the North Hamilton Crossing River Crossing Bridge project.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, a resolution involving a grant application to OKI about repaving Park Avenue.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments for the Surface Transportation Block Grant Repaving Pilot Funding Program relative to the Park Avenue Repaving Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.[1700.96]
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution to the Department of Natural Resources involving improvements to Jefferson Park, picnic shelter, picnic tables.
A resolution authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Program relative to improvements to Jefferson Park, including constructing a picnic shelter and installing picnic tables, and authorizing and directing the city manager to comply with and execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds if awarded.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to Vice Member Lauer, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion or comments on this one? Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
A solution adopted, 7-0.
Audience and city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to offer congratulations to the Hamilton Police Department Honor Guard and Chief Genowitz. The Honor Guard received first-place recognition in this past weekend's Memorial Day Parade, so congratulations to those officers. Thank you, chief.
The audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I just want to thank everyone who showed up to the Memorial Day Parade and ceremonies. Also want to say thank you to the Memorial Day Committee and our volunteers. They did a tremendous job, and really appreciate all of them stepping up and taking this on. It's a lot of work, and really appreciate the American Legion Post 138 for everything they do to keep that parade going. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Last Friday, we had the opportunity to celebrate one of our neighborhoods that, over the years, has been troubled. And as we look at the Riverview neighborhood, I want people to really take a look at what we have accomplished in the last seven years, I would say, going back probably 2016, 2017. And it's a credit to our whole city staff, our police force, our fire department. But seven years ago, or this past weekend, we had a Blues on Baileys, and it was almost a festival, like it was a, it was a party, it was a good time, there was, it was everybody coming together. The entire neighborhood was represented, the city was represented. There were children running around, having fun, people were communicating, people were dancing, people were singing. It was a great time. But I think we need to take a look at this as a mark of where we've come, as seven years ago, we couldn't have this discussion. And now today, 2025, our entire city, there was members of a lot of different neighborhoods that came together at Bailey Square to listen to this concert. And I just think it's great, as we continue to progress and we continue to bring our neighborhoods more involved, but to reach out to this specific neighborhood, when I thought of Bob Harris's journey, Bobby Knight's journey, and many others, and now entering as Candace White, who put this project on, everybody's vision of what that neighborhood could be was there, in that moment, that two, three-hour moment that we had, and it was an absolute blast. The music, I believe it was the BBC project, I believe, which is run by one of our local principals, was absolutely awesome. Everybody was engaged, everybody was having fun, it was a happy time on Bailey Square. And the next one is coming up, I believe, on the 23rd of June, and I encourage everybody to come out and enjoy our neighborhood, our Riverview neighborhood, as it was very vibrant and very fun. Ms. Hayden's kids were running around, having a blast, and I really enjoyed watching those kids running around with the neighborhood children. It was great. I would encourage everybody to come.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
In Vision Partnerships and the City of Hamilton are cosponsoring the Healthy Hamilton Neighborhood Games in our parks this summer. So for many of us, we remember way back in the day, maybe, when that's where we hung out, was in our parks, and we're really working hard to encourage young people and adults to come to the parks, starting Sunday, June 1st, which is this coming Sunday, at the LJ Smith Park. That will be our first outing. We will have all kinds of activities. There'll be mini soccer, there's going to be disc golf, there will be hula hoops, and if you watch on Facebook, you may see someone on council doing the hula hoop, but these are all contests that young people, adults, can compete. It will culminate on June 14th in Markham Park with our final Olympics of the Healthy Hamilton Neighborhood Games, and I think probably members of council will be there. I don't know if you'll be hula hooping, but we could, and we will give awards that day. The students will leave with balls, games, things that they can do at home, but it's really, let's be healthy, let's get out, let's enjoy our parks, it's beautiful, and make it a great summer. And these are every day, June 1st through the 11th, I believe. So it's on Facebook, you can see where your neighborhood park is in that.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Want to thank Mr. Nab, your Councilman Nab, for the Veterans Celebration on May 17th, Saturday, May 17th, at Armstead Park. The banner program has really taken off. It was a great celebration. I have to thank your whole committee, which includes, I believe, Mayor Mohler, but it was well-attended, it was a beautiful day, little windy, but it's just, it's just amazing how many people came out to celebrate it. This is the third year, I think, the third year, and Armstead Park was pretty well-packed, and I was just amazed, too, as, as people drove by with their radios turned up and stuff, they would turn them down because, you know, they were respecting, that was pretty nice. And so there's a lot of respect going there. You guys did a great job. My nephew-in-law got to speak, Joe Hosenberger, and he was, you can elaborate on that if you want, but very passionate about what he did for the service, and it's just a great day all around, I can't wait till next year.
Thank you. As Vice Mayor Pullman explained, our dedication is held annually on the Saturday before Memorial Day, which is Armed Forces Day. This year, we're privileged to have 634 veterans' banners throughout the city. The last installations were made this past Saturday, between 6:30 in the morning and about 1:00 in the afternoon, so our city is adorned now with veterans' banners, our heroes, to be honored until after Veterans Day, when they'll be taken down. So the posting for the, on the website of the template, the map of where all the banners was put up today, after all the banners were put in place, we actually walk and mark which poles the heroes are on, and that was posted today on Facebook and on various websites, the Chamber of Commerce, the Hamilton Community Foundation, and the City of Hamilton. I'd also like to thank T.B. Hamilton for being with us, the Journal News for being with us and be able to celebrate our heroes. The new applications for the Class of 26 will open up on Veterans Day in November, so get all your documents together to be able to honor your heroes, and we'll accept those applications from Veterans Day until the end of February 2026, and then those banners will combine with the current banners in 2026 and beyond. Our city has done a remarkable job installing the banners, so we're very, very grateful to the City of Hamilton, our elected teams, for being able to put up the banners and have them displayed throughout our city. Thanks very much.
Anyone else? I do also want to thank the Memorial Day event, the way it was handled, those who participated, whether it was in the parade, whether it was watching the parade or being out at the cemetery for the remembrance ceremony, those who were patriotic and recognized the fallen. Congratulations, Tim, on the banners. We're going to play part of your nephew's speech that he gave, because it was, it brought tears to people. I mean, they, they realized the meaning behind the banners, no doubt about it.
They're proud of him, yeah.
There, it's going to be a ceremony at Monument Park, where there used to be a sundial, it's been restored, that'll be 1:00 this Saturday. Monument Park seems to be visited quite a bit now, because it got people walking down or taking an elevator down from Wellhouse, crossing the street, looking at the log cabin and the sundial, and I've been told that over the last, I don't know how many days, we've had people that visit that park from Oregon, California, Louisiana, Florida, Tennessee, Wisconsin. They have a wedding in town, a big wedding in town this weekend, a family reunion, and Spooky Knug is also keeping that place real busy, and Marriott must also have been filled this past weekend. So a lot of things are definitely going on. We got July 4th coming up, so there's just a lot to do around Hamilton and a lot of great things going on. Anyone else? City manager, executive session tonight?
Not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Party.
Is there a, is there a motion, a round of applause for council? We continue the regular meeting, not that, that journal regular meeting, of course.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, agenda 701, go where you got to go.